Welcome to On Common Ground with Dusty Heed. I am Dusty Keen. As you know, every week what we're going to be doing is talking to people that I know who are thought leaders, who are innovators in their fields, people who have positive impacts on people's lives, and people who are doing what they want to do with their lives. And we talk a lot about everything from entrepreneurialism to just well-being as a whole, to all kinds of cool things in different spaces entirely, with sort of a rounding out of what's common down in the foundation of those things. And today, we have a really great guest, Pat Tillman. It's not only a buddy of mine, but this man has not only served our country, he grew up in an interesting situation where, you know, his dad was involved in politics, it still is, and he is now not only entrepreneur himself, but also works at a creative agency and has been a part of creating many different, you know, ideas for companies and campaigns for companies, including his own campaign for running for the school board, which he is now a member on. So the things that he goes after he achieves, I think, we'll talk a little bit about all that fun stuff. So let's welcome to the show, Mr. Pat Tillman. How you doing, man?
Hey, Dusty, I'm doing great. Thank you for the intro. Very kind and not deserving, but...
You look great, man. You know, it always is eerily similar to how much Pat, as you can see, looks like the guy from The Handmaid's Tale, who's like the captain dude. So don't be afraid, though. He's a good guy, I assure you. There's so many things that you're involved with in your life. You know, you're a husband, you're a father, but you also, you know, are involved in groups of leadership. You're involved in a lot of creative things within your job, and then you also, you know, have a side business that has to do with the stuff that you do outdoors, and then as well as like taking on your plate of being a school board member, which in this year, in this day and time, has not been easy, I'm sure. So I guess, just, you know, thinking of all the things that you are, how are you feeling today, man, and what's going on with you?
Yeah, I feel great. And I think I've always needed a lot of plates spinning. I think that keeps me sharp and it keeps me focused. And I would probably, my wife might say that I have too many plates spinning, or those around me may say that. But really, what most interests me, and growing up in a smaller town in Randolph County, with both parents that were lifelong educators, was service. You know, service was very, very important. That's what we talked about at the dinner table. That's what my parents lived out in our community. And so a lot of what I do, I can really, it's hitched to that, you know, that background and that experience. And so whether it's school board or working on a veterans' support group board in High Point, or the F3 thing that I'm involved in, or certainly here at my job, and raising a family, those are all sort of outward things that I do. And again, I, you know, I like to be involved in a lot of things, so that's...
Yeah, you know, I understand some of that as well. I tend to put a lot on my plate. And I feel like, you know, one of the things I'm getting into now is just the importance of gratitude and what kind of energy that creates. And I'm sort of diving into, how do I, from the moment that my eyes open every day, go about generating this gratitude and this sort of attitude that gives me the energy kind of vibe that I'm sending out and that is around me from that? And, you know, you've got to be someone, I know that you're someone that can start a day really, really early. You have, you're part of this group that gets up at just, in my opinion, wow, it's like 5:30 in the morning, you guys are outside, rain or shine, hot or cold, and you do this like exercise thing that gets, you know, that just gets all the things moving and, you know, the dopamine flowing and the heart pumping and all these... These obviously a benefit to you because, you know, you're able to achieve so much, accomplish so much. And hell, by the time it's, you know, 6:30 in the morning, you've done more exercise than most people will give in the country. So, you know, kind of talk a little bit to that, and what do you think about how you bring that into your life?
Yeah, well, as a military background, you really have to really make fitness and pain, you know, your best friend in a lot of ways. And so about, almost six years ago, I was introduced to a group, and this is my plug for F3, Fitness Fellowship and Faith. So that's F3 Greensboro. You can look it up online. We're in all the social media portals. I would encourage any man to give us a shot, to come out. It's not a exercise, CrossFit club. I mean, we take, any fitness level is fine. You know, we always say that it's leave no man behind, but leave no man where you left him. And so that's one of our, kind of our credos. But Fitness Fellowship and Faith, yeah, F3, it's been a huge part of my life. And we always say that the fitness is kind of the magnet, you know? Some guys are interested in improving their fitness, obviously. But then the second F, which is fellowship, that's when you really start to, you know, make those bonds. We have a weekly, or we did, weekly beer night. And then the third F is the faith, and we're, you know, interfaith group, all faiths, no faiths, you know, in terms of that are welcome. And it's just really amazing to see men of so many different backgrounds, ethnicities. We've really, diversity's been a huge part of our growth model in the last probably two, three years. That's finally coming to fruition. And there's something special that happens early in the morning, in the rain, in the snow in some cases, in the July heat, that happens when men come together that don't even know each other and work out. And it's peer-led. It's free to all men. It's peer-led. It takes place, as you said, rain or shine. And when you start your day, you know, with a 45-minute workout, and you're going to push yourself, you know, it just really, you start your day with a ton of purpose and it certainly gets you, it wakes you up. And so it's been a real thrill to be a part of it and to see the relationships that have happened over time. And it started in Charlotte about almost 11, 12 years ago. And then it's organically planted itself. You know, nobody gets paid. No one's really in charge, although we have some boards and some leadership, but it's amazing thing. So thanks for asking about F3.
Yeah, man, you know, one of the things that I think that is valid about that, and a lot of other conversations I'm going to be having is, the, when you share an energy that you all have, like I'm assuming the end of this workout, everybody is kind of on this level, right? Like, everybody's just, they've had this workout, they've completed it, they've accomplished something to start their day, and then they're all sort of like, you know, in this sort of zen moment before they go away. And you're sharing that together and the power that that has. And we're talking in multiple different interviews about that. And like, you know, this day and time, there's not like music festivals out there right now, but that's sort of the same type of thing I'm talking about, where you have people together in a mass that are all in the same energy length right there, and the power of that is just unbelievable. And I think is something that we, if more and more of us focus on that, that can be a shift in our world. Because as you know, politically, in a lot of ways, right now, think, you know, the wheels are coming off in certain places. And, you know, and maybe they should. Maybe that's what it takes to progress as a society, or whatever, whatever comes of this. But I know that the things that we can do, regardless of what else is happening, is get a focus on thinking about what we're thinking about, you know? And our thoughts, if they're of gratitude, and our energy fields together really can change things. Almost like a butterfly effect, you know? So the more and more people, I think, that are aware of, you know, let's consciously get our energies on this common ground of gratitude, of this common ground of that we are all connected, of this common ground of that we are very, very powerful beings and have energy that, you know, moves through us and that we give out, really according to our thoughts and our feelings and our emotions, can make a difference in our lives. And I know that you've seen a lot of lives impacted in the things that you've done in your life. And you are, at this point in your life, a collection of all the experiences and the people that you've met that kind of brings you to what you want to do. You know, the reality that we all face of, hey, the time here that we have is limited, is one that I think that the more we remind ourselves of that, in a way, not fearing it, but seeing the opportunity that it is, allows us to go, well, hey, I'm going to do this great thing with my time here. Or even begin to think about what purpose we want to have as we, you know, live out the days we have ahead. You have done something that's really difficult to do, and it takes a lot of different, you know, opinions in a pool, and then ultimately make an decision that affects a lot of people. And that's with your, you know, your decision to be on the school board. And I know that it wasn't easy for you to achieve that. I mean, it took you, I think the first time you ran was, you didn't get on, and then it was the second time around that you got on. So it's not something you just decide to do and do it. It's something you have to do, work out, and then get a lot of people to agree, you're the right guy to do it. And so I think that is really, really important. And the decisions that are made, you know, with this group are really important, and you were recently facing a huge one. So, you know, kind of, I guess, walk me through like what made you want to do that, be a part of it, and then like the challenges that you faced and how you kind of, how you kind of approached those?
Yeah, thanks for the question, and I really appreciated your observation. And I would say that like school board and F3, we're stronger in community. And we don't have to look very far. You know, I've always felt like the way that you build strong communities is zip code by zip code and street by street. You know, it's the small men's workout groups in the morning, where you develop a relationship with someone that doesn't look like you, doesn't talk like you, you know, is from a whole nother state maybe, but lives here in your community. Just like F3, that does. We achieve incredible things when we're in community together. And one of the biggest, really biggest killers, this was not, this was documented on NPR, there was a show, and I think in Wall Street Journal, one of the biggest killers of men is loneliness. It's that daily grind and the feeling that you're doing all these things by yourself, when we know we're not wired that way, right? We're better in community. We're better, to use your word, to draw off other people's energy. And just like you're a great entrepreneur and you've got this great vision always, and you're always thinking ahead, and that rubs off on people, and you can, you can help other people achieve their dreams. So, school board, in much the same way, I've always felt like, in the school board allows me this opportunity. I did run in 2012 at large, won the primary, which was a little surprising to a lot of people, I think, even myself. We showed very well, lost the general election by just a few percentage points against a seasoned incumbent. So that gave me a little encouragement. And then in 2016, the district lines were moved, and so it made it a little more balanced for everybody, and there was a new district. And so I ran and won, thankfully, in 2016. And now I'm up for reelection this November. But again, growing up, all we talked about were kids and schools and, you know, the access and equity of those tools and resources. And so I've always felt that the best way to impact a community is to be closest to it. And with the school board, with parents and children, you are no more closer than real life and helping to try to solve problems and make good decisions than any other political office I can think of. Because you're literally right there on the ground with them. I've got three children in school. You know, the whole reason for running for school board was to, again, be close to the community. And as I mentioned, there's nowhere closer to your community than people's, the parents and their children. I mean, what's the most probably sacred thing in people's lives is their children, their loved ones.
Absolutely.
So that was very important to me. And part of that started from my childhood. Both my parents were lifelong educators, so that's what we talked about. Kids and who's got, and the access and resources that those kids would have. Many in rural areas didn't have much at all. And so I ran in 2012 at large, won the primary, had a really good showing that was encouraging. Then I lost narrowly in the general election. And then in 2016, I ran again for District 3. It was a new district that had opened up and won that seat, and then now I'm up for reelection in November. But again, so the challenges, right, you mentioned. Certainly, in a, a lot of people may not know this, we're the third largest school district in the state of North Carolina. We're talking about 73,000 students, somewhere in the neighborhood of 9,000 to 10,000 employees, classified staff, teachers, you name it. And so it's a huge enterprise, right? It's a huge battleship. And there's, to me, there's nothing more important than preparing a young person to be college and career-ready and to build some character along the way as they go through our school system. Now, we're in a historic, obviously pandemic, that no one could have planned for or, you know, certainly anticipated. So we've got a whole new set of challenges on how we go back to school, when we go back to school, doing that safely. We've basically taken probably almost 300 years of education and flipped it on its head. If you think about the way we've educated children for the last 280, 300 years. And so, but, you know, businesses are doing that. Everybody's having to figure out and solve problems. So there's a lot of challenges right now, for sure.
Yeah, you know, my daughter was not, she's not been thriving in this situation with the at-home schooling and the not having sort of hands-on or one-on-one interaction with the teacher beyond the sort of, you know, internet interaction that she's had. She is willing to change schools from experimental school that's not going to go back, has decided they're not going to go back until at least the end of January, to go to a different school so that she can be at the school physically. Because she feels like if that's not there for her, then she's going to fail, and she's in the eighth grade. So I know that just from my daughter's perspective, how important it is for her to be able to go back to school. And the decision was made that that will happen, and I know that no matter what, there's going to be pushback, no matter what decision's made. But for me, it was the right one. I think that that's because for my child, it was the right one. And that decision was made, and it was voted on, and I'm sure that it wasn't unanimous. But, you know, what, so, you know, were those things that you had to consider when you, when you guys went to make the vote for that ultimately?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we've been taking input really since probably June or July. We've, we've been getting feedback from parents and input, and you need that. The first part of making decisions is, on the local level, for sure, is listening and hearing what parents say. But, you know, you take all that input, and then you also, you take input from health professionals and educational experts that know that all the pediatricians unanimously, just about, agree, and mental health professionals, that kids need to be in school. But there's risk doing that. So you take all of that. And I've always said, as a policymaker, like we are on the Board of Ed, what you have to do is you take all the input, you weigh the risk versus reward, and then at some point, you kind of turn the spigot off, and it's time to make a decision. It's not a poll, it's not a popularity, or how many emails you get on one side or the other. You take it all in, the totality of the information, and then you, you know, you have to make a good decision based on all of that and where your conscience is and where your mind and heart are. And that's what we did, and it was very narrow. It was a five-to-four vote to go back K through eight, that is, starting October 20th, with the health metric of 5% hospitalization. So that was our guide for that. But yes, to be sure, there's a reason that we have schools, and there's a reason that schools are anchors in the community. And that's because they are some of the safest places for kids to be. Not only are they learning, but there's social-emotional learning that is way largely missed when they're not in school around their peers.
Right. And, you know, going back to, circling back to what we were talking about, the ability to have the same energy shared. Let's say, you know, particularly in a school, if you're teaching a subject that brings about an emotion that people could be on the same wavelength, that kind of energy share, that kind of, you know, exchange is absent if you're not in the same energy field with other people. It's just not possible to have. So I think that, you know, subconsciously, on a sub, you know, level, that that's something that maybe these kids are missing, and that was why. Maybe, you know, my own daughter was so adamant about being able to go back to school and share in an environment that are other people sharing the same ideas or learning the same things, and they can feel, they can feed off each other's energy while they're in the same room. I think that we're probably, as human beings, better in learning in situations where there are multitudes of us together than separately, at least in a form where you get to share ideas freely and, you know, you're there. And then, of course, to the access of everyone, 73,000 people, the access to internet, access to adequate equipment, to have some of these functions happen where you can have a one-on-one or whatever. Some of these kids may or may not have access to that. And that had to be something that probably you had to think about as well in the decision that was made, you know? And I think that hopefully, you know, you're up for reelection, you get reelected, and everybody is really, anyone that's on the board right now is a little bit sympathetic to the fact that you had to make decisions that previous board members in other times didn't have to, that you were faced with some difficult stuff. And I think we'll see, you know, unfortunately, the positive outcomes of this decision being made won't be data shown yet because the election will be before that. But, you know, what a thing it would be, you know, if it was. And, you know, how are you feeling right now as far as the election is going? Like, do you feel like you've, you're making strides? Do you feel like in the feedback that you're getting that is going to be a close one for you? What do you think?
Yeah, I think it's going to be close. I always treat every, you know, race I've been in, you know, as like I'm a wounded animal. You know, I'm out there, you know, competing and for, really to have the ear of the voter and explain my positions if they don't know. Certainly, there are some people that know me because I've been on the board for years, but there are a lot of people that have just moved here, a lot of people that don't. So I don't take that lightly. It's been one of the greatest, you know, is the greatest really privileges and honors of my life to serve, you know, our students and their families, and look forward to doing it again. And, you know, I'm out there, I'm definitely meeting people as, we don't have some of the events and things that we used to.
Right.
But I'm doing a little more on the digital side and certainly doing some door knocking. Started that last weekend. Will continue that, obviously in a safe way and giving people space. And if they just want me to leave something behind, then that's fine. But yeah, I feel good about it. I mean, I feel like I've, I've served people well. I've been responsive. I've, you know, I've tried to lead and really lead from listening and learning. And I have three kids in school, so I'm, I think I'm the only board member with, with children in the system. So I'm living it every day, and I would never ask you to do something that I myself would not ask for my own family, so.
Right. Hey, that's, I didn't, kind of strange that you're the only one with active children in the, on the board. You would think that there would be more in that situation. You know, let's just give a little bit to Paddle Hound and your entrepreneurial side. You know, what, what in you kind of, you definitely have that spirit in you to do something that, and bring something new to a market, or, you know, be an entrepreneur in a way that you, and I know that you go to defense, and there were different things in the past that you do to market that. Tell us a little bit about Paddle Hound, how that's going, and where that came from?
Yeah, I mean, I've always been, well, for the last really 20 years, in some ways, in the creative community, whether it's with furniture manufacturers, retailers, home decor, that's been sort of my background. But I've also diversified over the years and got to work on some more fun, I guess, you know, consumer-facing type of businesses and even advanced manufacturing. So it's been a wide spectrum of folks that I've had the opportunity to learn from and work on campaigns and projects, and all the way from a concept on a, you know, cocktail napkin or a whiteboard, all the way to final media and a, on TV, you know, broadcast television commercial. So I always felt compelled to, wherever I could, to build a brand, kind of from the grassroots, right? Kind of like Common Grounds, probably, and then you're in Flatiron, some of the others. And it just so happened, a couple of guys I went to college with, one is kind of on the manufacturing side and kind of does that area, wheels and deals with the apparel makers and the factories. Another gentleman is very creative and artistic, and he frankly is Paddle Hound. I mean, he is the demographic. A great guy, serves and fishes all the time. And so I kind of came at it from a, I guess, a marketing and organizational perspective. And so we just started, my friend Bill, he started noodling around, sketching out, you know, something. And then it just sort of happened organically. And in the stand-up paddle industry, there was, we felt like there was a gap for, you know, higher-end apparel, if you will, that's dedicated, high-performance apparel, that's dedicated just for that sport, whether it's stand-up paddling, canoeing, kayaking, surfing. You know, there's Salt Life, and there's a lot of different brands that kind of speak to more generically. But there was nothing, we felt like, in that space that spoke directly to those, that demographic and that audience. So that's been a lot of fun. I mean, it's, I don't put as much time as I probably should, but we have fun with it. We're in a couple stores now. You know, we do a lot of online sales, obviously. And, you know, who knows, maybe one day that's my sort of, my swan song or my act two that I can really get into.
Sure. Well, you know, I definitely want to talk a little bit about, you know, the act two coming, you know, for you. And, but also what I love about it is it encourages people to get outdoors and do things. I see just especially in this time for the past six months, a generation of kids that were already very much more, just, you know, stay at home, not go out in big groups, not as social, definitely less partying groups to now where they've been quarantined, and that's kind of further happened to them. So anything that can help inspire people to go and get outside and do things outdoors and be in nature, especially with this younger generation, I think, is awesome, man. And, you know, you kind of take it for granted until you're all sitting in your house and you can't go anywhere. You go, damn, you know, what a, what a thing I, even taking a long walk, but, you know, getting out in a kayak, man, how great that would be to do, and good for your soul, man. So these are things that I hope that, you know, you and your own family's life, I see some of the things that you guys do together are involving outdoor stuff. And a lot of these kids aren't getting that. And that's, that's something that we as parents, I think, have to sort of continue to focus on is that they, they can't just live their life in a bubble in a room with internet and games, and that's it. We have to really ensure that they do get the enlightenment that comes from being outside, man, and doing, doing cool stuff like paddling and, you know, and you certainly do that. So this next, the next chapter of Pat Tillman, the future of Pat Tillman, what do you see that, man? Like, you know, this, you are a culmination of everything to this moment, the people that you've met, the experiences you've had. Where do you see this next you, this future you? What does he do and what is his, his impact and hopes?
Yeah, great question, and I apologize. I'll have to wrap, wrap it up with this one. But maybe we can do this again sometime and spend some more time together.
Sure.
But, you know, it's really just, I mean, not to oversimplify, but just to be a better husband, you know, a better dad, a better friend, a better neighbor. And just service is really what I envision, you know, me doing. And I've got a lot of years left, and I'm trying to build a business here at THS Creative. And I've got some wonderful people here, and we're doing some really neat things. And it's just a great, great, great company and fabulous people. So that's going to keep me busy for a long time. And as I said, I've got three kids, Paddle Hound and some of the other things, school board. But yeah, just, yeah, just to really try to expand, you know, not to get religious, but expand the kingdom of heaven, you know, and try to, you know, do unto others as I would have them do to me. And sort of the golden rule... And sort of the golden rule stuff, right? But really, just at the end of the day, just really be a better friend, you know? Better husband, better father. That'd be, that'd be perfect.
Well, Pat, as always, man, I always enjoy talking to you, man. I really appreciate you taking the time out for us.
Oh, and a fantasy champion. Fantasy champion. That's what I see in my future.
Maybe next year, right? Hey, but listen, man, no, seriously, thank you so much for that. And, you know, I really, I'm very proud of everything that you're doing, man. And I'm glad that you're out there doing it for us in so many ways and the service that you do provide and the directions that you do, man. We are thankful for it. And it's always fun, dude, and I look forward to the next time that we chat, dude. I really appreciate it, man. Thanks.
Well, thanks for the opportunity, man. I love you, Dusty, and.
See you. Let's watch some games soon, man.
Yes.
All right, I'll call you. Bye, man. Bye, buddy.
Bye-bye.